All right, Bannock County Commissioners, on a wet Tuesday, August 22nd morning, it's about time to get a little bit of rain out there, hopefully for you mountain bikers. Todd, it got in the hills, so the trails aren't as dusty. We'll see. Start off, we don't have any indigent business today, so Charity and Seacog, you guys are up front, so Charity and friends.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, and this is for the meetings further on down, we have three public hearings scheduled for later. One is a public hearing for the fiscal year budget 2026 at 11:00. It is actually scheduled for 15 minutes. I believe that that may go longer, so I would just suggest that we finish that budget hearing and then go into the next public hearing that is actually scheduled for 11:15. But just if anybody's watching, they would know that that would be, the last hearing will be after the budget hearing.
Correct. So, we'll talk to legal and see what, how we can handle that, but we'll figure it out here in the next few minutes and go from there. Charity, the floor is yours. Introduce yourself and your friends, and we'll go from there.
Beautiful. Charity Staggs, Southeast Idaho Council of Governments.
I am Danae Zapata. I am the HR and Grant Writing Specialist.
Lane Burgess, Executive Director with the Southeast Idaho Council of Governments. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And we are here to talk about the all department general grant writing contract. It is coming to an end at the end of September. Coming to ask if you'd be interested in renewing, but have an update for you on the current one. So with this contract, we were able to write two Idaho Department of Lands grants as 480,000 total. We charged 10,000 total. If awarded, those grants, they have a two-year turnaround time, so we're not going to hear back from them until 2027. But if awarded, that puts your return on investment at $1. For every dollar spent, you get $48 back. But that's not realistic. So I looked at some of the previous contracts with Bannock County Emergency Management Department. The return on investment for all of those is a $1 to 10, which is actually higher than all of our other grant writing contracts. We typically average at 1 to 7 over several years. And then additionally, some context, when we changed from the emergency management grant writing contract to this general grant writing contract, we changed it from an hourly rate to a fee per submittal rate. And we don't know what kind of cost reduction to the county it will have, but I looked at those previous contracts and figured out what it would look like if that was a fee per submittal rate, and it was about 20% reduction in cost to the county. Some challenges with this last year is getting engagement for planning. A lot of these grants, it takes a year or more to plan a project for the grant. And getting some engagement to start that process has been pretty difficult. There's a little bit of a money chasing attitude, and what I mean by that is the find me the grants and I'll make a project for the grant. More and more, finding that doesn't really work. You want to be going toward the project first and then find a grant that supports it. There's also been a federal administration change. Unfortunately, some of the programs that we were looking at either possibly on the cutting board, getting defunded, and we don't know what new programs are going to roll out in this next year. Are there any questions?
No. Go ahead. Do you have any Commissioners?
No, don't at all. Lot of questions, but not necessarily about what you just talked about.
So, the contract is coming to an end when? The end of this fiscal year?
End of this fiscal year.
What did we budget towards this?
For next year, I think we'll probably help with the same dollar amount. But the concerns and the issues that Charity is facing are the same issues that our internal grant writer faces, is she can go out and find grants and she presents them to departments, and a lot of times, the follow-through isn't there. So this isn't a different problem, and that's why our internal grant writer has had some success, but not as much success as we would like. So, it's not a matter of who's writing the grants, it's what the department needs presented so that we know what items to look for.
So is it a cultural shift that we need, or just a mindset shift? What is it?
I think a lot of it is like she said, is that they find a grant and then want to do a program. If there was more pre-planning, as in, I have this idea, here it is, if a funding opportunity or a lot of grant funding, it's very similar, the same year after year. So you can almost look at it and go, okay, I see this grant, and it will fit what our intended purpose is later on. And so if we already have, say, Rentson Road Bridge and all of their projects that are potentially possible over the years, if they know they're going to have to do this stuff, if they had engineering plans, or you know, if we worked on getting some of those engineering plans ahead of time for an up and coming future grant. So that's where a lot of that problem lies. And I wouldn't necessarily say it's a bad thing on department parks because they've got their hands full too. So it's just, that's a lot of where the issue is. But where her contract isn't, she's not going to get paid, and she's not doing any work, it's not necessarily a bad thing to have a contract.
I do very much appreciate our relationship with Seacog. I think it's a good relationship, and so I for one would probably like to continue it just as Nancy said, to see what we can do going forward.
Well, I'd like to continue myself, but I think that we need to have a leadership meeting and talk about grants and stuff. I mean, let the leadership know what's out there a little bit, maybe have both of them come in and present a little bit and have that conversation.
Commissioners, if I may, you know, I think if there's a way, kind of going off of what Commissioner Moser just said, is if there's a way that Seacog can help facilitate that discussion amongst the department heads, and we're happy to do that. We are not here to replace or take over anybody, we just, we want to add capacity to what you already have. And through this contract, the way that we do it is to enable us just to add those extra hands, and that's going to include that outreach and that education, and it's not going to cost you guys anything to do that. And so if there's a way that we can help facilitate that, please don't hesitate to ask.
So, the way I read this here, that you're being billed 75, is that what it is for any work, $75 per hour?
So...
But then it depends on...
It's the tier.
Depends on all the tiers. So is it, do we have any idea of like, okay, this particular grant will have this much scope of work? Is there any estimates in some of those? I think that would be helpful.
Oh, how much, like, time will be spent on certain grants, or are you asking about that?
Yeah, for instance, if we did have a grant idea out there, can we get even an estimate upfront, just saying if we think this is going to be 200 hours or whatever? So it's not just a total unknown out there. I guess that's what I'm looking at. I see the tiered approach, but also see that the $75 per hour, I guess I'm just going to see how that all is going to fit in with budgeting, with everything else, just the overall scope of using our own folks versus using you. I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Gotcha. So the Commissioner, the tiered approach is actually about what it costs for, the more, the higher, the bigger the grant ask, the more time it takes. But that tiered approach, the fees, is about how much it costs to write the grant and to plan for the grant.
Based on, based on your experience, based on, you know, past history, so...
Yeah, it's some of the pre-planning and then into the actual planning phase and the grant writing, and then tracking to make sure the notification comes in.
I think what I would like to do, and I was visiting with Jason before we came in here, and I think we need to have an elected officials meeting first of September, and I'd like to talk to them about the grants and maybe have you guys come in along with Nancy and talk about that and see what we can do to stir up some interest, and then maybe revisit the contract after, after we have that meeting with the elected officials. What do you think about that? Would you guys be okay with that? We'll find a date that works and have you come in and Nancy and come in and talk to us all about it so we can kind of have a better, do a better job planning and go forward. Because again, I like the relationship, we do like to continue that forward, but need to have a little broader conversation with the other elected officials to help make it worth our time and your time to do this. So we'll reach out, we'll get that on the schedule first of September, and we'll get you back.
Great. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Todd?
Todd Marger with Bannock County Juvenile Justice. I'm here today, we had an opportunity arise on Monday of last week through the Idaho Juvenile Justice Commission's Youth Committee. They put forward two grants. One is a Rise Up Initiative. It is really based on providing the curriculum for what they call Girl Circle. When you look at what we've got going on at the village, we have Bannock Youth Foundation teaching and making sense of yourself worth class, which really focused on, on the gender specific females that are coming through our building for status purposes. They were able to teach three classes, they did, they served 27 youth, but they lost their counselor and weren't real consistent over the last, like, after they lost the counselor, they didn't have anybody that could teach it. But this Rise Up Initiative would allow us to purchase, well, basically, it's kind of a unique grant because there's really no money changing hands. Basically, what the Youth Committee would do would be, would to purchase the curriculum and send it to us so we could use it. My idea would be that we have these master's level interns that need to do group work. They're usually on an AmeriCorps contract, so they're on a nine to 12-month contract, and they could teach that youth, the Girl Circle class. So that was the first opportunity. The other opportunity is called Step, the Step Forward Initiative, and it's supporting truancy education and prevention. And basically what it would do would provide the Truancy 101, which is an online course through third millennial classrooms, it's evidence-based, as well as the Girl Circles is evidence-based as well. But it would provide us with an opportunity to, basically what they do is purchase 200 of these online courses. And kids that are being referred to the village, or to probation, or kids that are on probation and having truancy issues, we could have them take that online class. It basically goes through and helps the kids understand what the root cause of truancy is and creates a plan, an action plan for them, and we can incorporate it into our case management plans, working with the youth. We could also use it for the prevention youth, maybe the schools are referring kids to us that are on that cusp of maybe getting cited into the justice system, and we could maybe intervene there. But first off, this was brought to my attention on Monday, so a big thank you needs to go out to the grants team, Nancy, you and your team, Luann, Kristy, they were able to get that approved in the, I don't know what the form's called, the, it's a good deal form, I guess I'd call it, go forward with it. But it's a unique situation because there would be really no money changing hands, the committee would buy the truancy courses, we would have a password ID, assign that to the kids that are taking it. We get access to the information that's, that the kids are putting into that so that we can help them follow their plan. But with the Girl Circle, and it's also an online deal and application process, and it's asking for an organization's representative signature, so I'm not sure if, I guess I'm seeking approval to sign for that, or maybe give you guys the link so someone can sign off on that. I'm not sure how that all works.
I think if Commissioner could sign this document and then give, probably tell it, right? You can just grant him authority to sign on behalf of the county for online, and then just make sure they forward that to the grant team.
Yeah, and so with the Girl Circle, we're requesting, the cost would be $2,472. That's going to include the Girl Circle curriculum that has, I want to say, it's over 100 different groups or courses for the kids to take, they're an hour and a half long, so we could do two sessions a week for an entire year on that. And then the Truancy 101 classes, it's $60 per class, and I'm, I'm looking at, I initially was going to ask for 150 or request 150 courses, but then I got thinking from a prevention standpoint, maybe we could get 50 of those upstream, so I'm requesting 200, which would be a $12,000 cost to the, to the grant. But really, it's kind of a sweet deal because really no money changes hands, I don't have to budget. They may, they ask me if I may go speak at a committee's meeting about how we're using the programs and the outcomes, but there's really no grant reporting upon, after that. So I felt pretty good about it, and to be able to get it knocked out in a week and come seek approval, I feel pretty good about it.
Quick question, what's the efficacy of the online courses for these youths? Are they, are they taking them and is it working?
Yeah, so we have, I haven't had any youth take the Truancy 101. Third Millennial Classrooms has a tobacco course. Obviously, we prefer to do it in person with the health department if they can, but sometimes there's transportation issues, sometimes there's other issues that, you know, parents working, things like that. And so we have used them, they are evidence-based, so they've been researched and shown to do what they say they're, they're going to do. I feel like this is intuitive enough where our case managers will have access to it and go over it with the family and incorporate into the, into the case plan, that it's a great addition to what we're doing.
Okay, cool. Any other questions from anybody?
So the funding, Krista just opened her book.
Oh, no, that's for the next one. This is just, the granting people will pay the, for the classes and, like you said, millennial.
Yeah, just provide it to us to, to use. So it's a, I was really happy to see there was no invoicing, budgeting, transfer of money, quarterly reports to do.
Well, based on Nancy's recommendation, you have any questions?
Yeah, that was my only question of it is this $12,000, but the grant is actually providing the funds for these.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that's totally clear.
Yes, it is. Yes, there would be no cost to the county.
We've been invited to apply for this grant, that would then pay for both...
For the curriculum, yeah.
Okay, that was my only, I want to make sure that was clear.
Okay, well then I will move that we approve the application for both grants and authorize Todd's electronic signature on the, was it the Step Forward Initiative? Is that...
Yeah, it was the Step Forward Initiative, is the Truancy one, and the Rise Up Initiative is the Girls programming.
Okay, so authorize Todd's electronic signature on both of those, and then request notification to the grants team when you have signed that.
All right.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Buddy and the coroner, Tori.
Buddy Romrell, Public Works Assistant Director.
I'm like Tori Danner, Bannock County coroner.
So I was going to start with just a brief history of what we got going on with Tori's fleet. So he's got three vehicles currently in his fleet. He's got a 15 Durango, a 22 Silverado, and a 25 Silverado. All his vehicles are meeting the criteria for the county as far as utilization, so he's hitting over 2,000 miles per year, excuse me, on each vehicle. Just to give you an idea of how many miles he is putting on, so on his 25, he's already at 6,500 miles. On the 22, he's at 69,000 miles. So in 2023, the sheriff's department was getting rid of one of their Durangos. We thought we would try to reutilize that with Tori. It's been a pretty good vehicle up until about eight or 10 months ago, and we've been fighting some weird electrical ghosts on it. The first time we had it into the shop, we found that there was a short with the headlights on it. Once we took the aftermarket headlights on, put the stock ones back on, for whatever reason, the vehicle started, the issues went away for about a month, and then here we are again. So we're not sure if we're chasing it through the ignition, the PCM or the ECM on the vehicle, but we just don't know, like, how far to take the repairs on the vehicle. Our plan, I guess, as you guys know in the fleet policy, is we're trying to do that 10-year, 150,000 mile replacement. So this vehicle will meet that criteria in FY '27. So we're planning on replacing that vehicle next year anyway. So our thought was to come to you guys and see which direction you would like us to move forward with, is if we should look at repairing this vehicle, which the shop would ultimately not recommend, as the Durangos have had numerous electrical problems with all of them with the sheriff's department, as you guys know. We are looking at possibly putting them into like a Tahoe and looking for something used or possibly new. There are a few options out there between the 55 to 65,000 range, somewhere in there is what that would cost. Estimate on repairs in this is 100% estimate because I don't know, but I mean, we're talking $2,500 to $3,500 at best, and that's replacing both the ECM and the PCM. As far as, I don't know if you want me to go into detail on comparing a Durango and a Tahoe, or just to let you know, we're getting like a like vehicle, but he'd be gaining a little bit of trunk space with the Tahoe, which is ultimately what he's hoping to do. Yeah, is there anything you wanted to add to that, or any questions you guys have?
Questions?
A few.
Go ahead.
So, a couple, we had a van and you didn't like it because the bodies were inside with you, so we're doing the same thing with the Tahoe?
So, when we went to the Durango, what we found is, because I, primarily when we do the larger transports to Boise, that's a long period of time, right? And what we've seen is some, some are okay with that, and some families are absolutely not. This has given us the diversity with having the Durango, that we can still do the transport, but it allows me to keep all the stuff inside as well and still have that room to do the transport. So it gives us that diversity.
And then my next question would be, before we talked about keeping the vehicles at your office and not taking them home, it sounds to me like we're logging a lot of miles on these vehicles, and so do we need three vehicles? Because if you, if you have them at the office and you travel back and forth to the office, is two vehicles sufficient for a county of our size?
I would invite you to, man, I would say no, because all three of my guys have been working at the same time and in different areas. We're getting busy enough that we are having stacked calls, or calls in different parts of the county, or you have something like, I've got a guy in Boise today, I've got a guy working a case currently, and then we still have the ability to respond. And we are getting busier, and we are at that point where all three of us have been in different locations working at the same time. Or you have, last night, perfect example. I responded to work a scene, that scene turned into a larger scene, and so I ended up needing to call in some help, and so we ended up having to call in somebody else to come and do that. Where my third guy was at home resting so that he could get up and transport and go to autopsy this morning. And that call was followed by a secondary call, back to back. And we were facing, I think while we were on that scene, we had another one on deck. So, no. We are busy enough that we absolutely need three vehicles, because we need to be able to have the ability to be in three different locations at once.
Well, and again, utilization, I mean, that 25 Silverado that, that we had got, what had been last March?
Yeah.
Somewhere in there. I mean, he's already at 6,500 miles, so, and I know a lot of those miles are going back and forth to Boise and whatever stuff he's got going on, but they're, they're definitely getting more than their fair share of miles on their vehicles.
In regards to take home and the use that way, these guys are only driving them for work purposes, they all, they get called out all night. And so rather than, if they're at home, right, if it's after hours, if they're at home, then yeah, they can go, but if they're not, they still have to go back home, change out, get ready for work, and then they would have to drive to the office, pick up a vehicle. If they live out north and the call's out north, then they're going back and forth, and it's just a longer response time, which ties up other officers, detectives, and it takes longer of that family sitting there before we have the ability to even step on scene. So we have tried to maintain a response time that's adequate to work the best, but we work within the vehicle use policy. These guys do not operate vehicles unless it is for work. So, and I would say it's very little, that as far as the to and fro. I mean, they drive to and fro, but they have the ability. If you look at percentages, as far as after hour callouts, we are 51.74% of the call volume is after hours. So that is why we have to take home.
I'd say that there isn't an after hours for a coroner.
I agree.
I mean, that's your job.
But I mean, as far as, we keep office hours, right? So they're in the office, they're doing ballistics and things like that, but we're also still responding after that. So there are days, and I agree and I understand that, but there are days that we are all day in the office, doing follow-up, doing everything that we need, and then we go home and we get called back out again, such as last night. But this gives the guys the tools to be successful with their job and to do what we need to do.
The part two, that why I think we're so adamant on trying to get rid of the Durangos, it's just like when it broke down on the 20th, he was on a scene, pulled in, shut the car off. I mean, say he was to load up the body inside that car, and he gets in and it won't start. I mean, it just, it seems like to me, he needs to have something that's reliable. And I don't know that the Durango is, is reliable, so...
And I don't want to go back to when we got this Durango, because there was things that happened there that shouldn't have happened. I mean, the sheriff's office wanted to get rid of it, the coroner's one that went and got it without our permission, and so that's kind of a sore spot with me anyway.
So how would you pay for this, Buddy?
I wouldn't.
Yeah.
I'm just asking, lead manager, what's your plan going forward?
He's the lead manager, we don't worry about the money.
I'm assuming you've talked to others, so...
Yeah, so they were, I'll let Kristy speak.
Tori, Tori has the 300,000 that was in his budget that was supposed to go towards building that building. We haven't obviously done that yet, and it was rebudgeted for next year, so we could use that capital money instead of rolling all 300 forward. You could allocate, say, 65,000 and use that, and then we could just roll forward the difference. The only other option would be to get into contingency, but that's getting pretty thin. So I think his department budget, using that capital money, would make the most sense. And fortunately, he does have that money. If it was a different department that didn't have that, then we'd have to look at other avenues.
Okay. I think I prefer to use the money that's already in his, got to be careful on choice of words. I was going to use coffers, but I didn't want to use. I'd rather make the decision that we need to make today and worry about the decision next year about the ongoing purchases. And I do agree, I guess I'm going to put you both right back on the spot though, is this the, is this how with both of your expertise in what you're doing, is this the recommendation that you think we need to move forward with this vehicle? Because I'll put you guys on this dotted line, is this your best decision that you think we ought to do?
I think so, yeah. In FY '27, we'd be looking at replacing it with a Tahoe then anyway. What I have found, and I got to do some more digging, but sometimes when you order things, you don't get as good as deal as you would if you go purchase one on a lot, because it's been sitting on a lot for, for several months. So we were going to add a Tahoe to the pool next year, which my bid was around 70,000, and I found a Tahoe LS that would suit him perfect for right around 62,000, brand new, in Salt Lake. And so I kind of want to dig into that a little bit too, for next year's fleet, but that was kind of what we'd come up with. There, there is a couple used options out there for around the 50 range with about 20-ish thousand miles. All Chevys come with a 100,000 mile powertrain warranty or five years, so you'd lose a couple years on that warranty, or if you went new, you'd have the extra couple of years, but ultimately, that's up to what you guys would like me to do.
Well, and I think that this is also something that we discussed, whether or not it was the right time, because we tried to stretch that and kind of be within the fleet policy and take that for when it was most decided. and, and take that for when it was supposed to cycle out anyway. I, we brought it up and discussed it a little bit as far as the issues we're having, but we ultimately decided it might be a little too premature, but that was prior to having more and more issues. I mean, we tried to, because I didn't wanna ask for a lot in, in that same fiscal year, so we were trying to wait, but ultimately, that's, doesn't seem like that's gonna be a reasonable option anymore, so.
So, coming back to the fleet, the vehicle that you have, are we gonna need to fix it anyway to get rid of it for a decent price?
So, my thought was just, just sell it as like a mechanic special, and I can get on and kinda do a little more research on that and get an idea of what that vehicle's gonna be worth, and yeah, maybe it is worth putting a couple thousand dollars into, but my thought was just mechanic special.
We had the one car that we decided, let's fix, that you brought back to Boise that we've utilized, I just, that's what I'm questioning, I mean, is $2,500 or $3,500 worth investing in that?
I think the Durangos, we haven't gotten a ton for when we auctioned them.
Okay, would you search that out a little bit?
Yeah, I can do that.
Because this is the last of those.
Yeah.
Durangos.
Yeah, and that's, I don't know, the ghost electrical problems of those things have been awful.
Light package and everything else, that, do you have different light package on the Durango? I mean, that's the reason you wanted that one, because it was the police.
Because it already had the emergency lights in.
Yeah, so is that an addition onto this other, and?
No.
Are we gonna have to refabricate the backend and?
Nope.
We can take his lights out if that's what you'd like to do and put them in the new vehicle, or?
That's what's causing it not to start.
No, no, different lights.
It's kinda interesting, the coroner's vehicle has ghost electrical problems, just saying, but.
No, we should, we should just.
Well, could you do the research that Commissioner Moser's asking for and come back on Thursday, and then we can have a, a plan and make a decision on Thursday? Would that be all right?
Yeah.
If we just give it a couple more days?
Yep, that's fine.
With that, so that we understand if, what we could get if we sold it, do we need to put some money into it or not, and go from there.
Would you guys like me to try to get some bids or anything put together, or do you wanna just, what's your thoughts there as far as on the replacement?
Why don't you do the research, find a couple vehicles that you think would work, so you could have the whole, the whole picture for us, and we can make that decision on Thursday, so we can just stop down and let Christie know, put you back on for Thursday.
But talking about your bids, I mean, if you've researched too and you have some that are on the lot, so we're not waiting six months, I mean, that's, that's good information for me anyway.
Correct, correct.
So, I, I wouldn't invest a lot of time in the bidding process, honestly, if, if you have some that are on the lot now, because it sounds like it's time to do it now rather than wait six months.
Yeah, that's what I meant, I didn't mean go out and bid or anything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Find your, find a price and bring us a package.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, and I, the only, just the only stone that I'd like to have you turn is, and I agree, we don't need to be somewhere and have the battery fail in a bad situation, but is there any other utilization that we could use somewhere else in the county for that vehicle for minimal cost? It doesn't need much, other than just once in a while. If we're not gonna get anything on auction, if we're not getting anything, sometimes $2,500 vehicle would be good enough for, you know, some other, just at least, look at that.
Better than the Vibe?
Well.
I don't know, man, Vibe keep going. I'm gonna be honest, I've got a lot of heartburn with those Durangos, I wanna see them all gone.
And that's why I rely on what you, what your recommendation is, but just think about, we are spending county taxpayers' dollars, make sure we do due diligence, and we can defend that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. We'll see you on Thursday then, thank you.
That speaks volumes, he wants to keep the vibe over the, over the Durango.
How long is that vibe?
They only drive it to the jail and back every day.
How, how much could you put in that vibe?
All right, we have two resolutions, Resolution 2025-54, which is approving claims through contingency for planning and development claims, and also Resolution 2025-55, authorization to disclose of surplus assets. Is there any discussion on either of those?
No.
No.
Mr. Jerr, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve Resolution number 2025-54 and 55.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the next, for signature only, is the Flock Safety Order Form, this is the cameras for the Sheriff's Department.
I'm okay with that, but they're still struggling trying to figure out what your last name is.
Yeah.
Jeff Bullock.
On the Flock, we need to decide if you wanted to use county operations for the 26,000 or contingency. Right now with, with contingency, we are at 109,500 of the 200 budgeted.
Where are we at with county operations?
That is a lot more money because we had the 500 for potential litigation, but 170,000 that's been used. We had Grant match of 230, and a little bit of that's been used.
I'd take it out of the 300,000 for the coroner.
I'd rather take this out of operations than contingent money.
County operations?
Because this really is part of, in my opinion, county operations.
Some of those are gonna go up to the.
Yeah. In fact, while we were talking about that, I had a visit with the mayor of Pocatello, and they have got some tremendous success stories out of the cameras they already have in use, so I think there's some good discussion even down the road, like even after this, what's our next step? Because he's talking, we talked about Laba, but we also talked about other key points around there, so I, it was a great discussion on this.
Interesting thing about Laba, at the Laba Foundation meeting, we're talking about buying some cameras for the new parking lot and playground that we have, and I talked to him about this, and we're gonna reach out to the Sheriff's Office and probably do something like this as well, so.
So, it's a, it's a good thing to move forward, and that's why, to me, I'd rather pay it out of the county operations and maybe look for matching partners to move this thing forward.
I'll get Tracy to give me the invoice, and then I'll have the board sign that in our county operations.
Okay. With that, I'd make the motion that we go ahead and approve this particular invoice as it comes in for this amount, and make sure the Commissioner signs it with the right name.
I changed it.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion on that?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As a quick note, next year, the 14,000 Sheriff's Office will pay, and that'll be the second year commitment on those, so.
Okay, cool. Christie, the signature on the management letter for the audit, and you wanna speak to that?
So, I have a couple documents in front of you, you have the engagement letter with Deaton and Hope Dean, you have the cooperative agreement to send to Whipfleet so that they'll cooperate with Deaton to take over the audit, and then you have a document from legal that is to terminate the audit with Whipfleet.
Okay, I'm assuming you looked through the engagement?
Yeah, and I, it's fairly standard, it's pretty water plated, and I, I like that direction that we're moving forward, so with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion, we go ahead and sign each one of those and move forward with it.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
There is management representation on the engagement letter, I don't know if you wanna have Jason sign that or myself?
Either way, it doesn't matter.
Which would be appropriate.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter? Christie, you'll probably be, you'll be more closely involved. And that brings us to the consent agenda. Oops, yeah, sorry, Ken. Any questions, comments, or concerns on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and with that, we will be at recess until a 10.